Committee for the hard work that all of you have done to get this theater upgraded. And we're, in the past, we've had issues with the PowerPoints and had to hold cords together and jiggle things to make sure that things were working. And all of that has been repaired and worked on, and we got state-of-the-art technology. So thanks to everybody who helped make that happen. I wanted to let you know that we have Brandon Baxter and Sarah McCain here, who are both monitoring the Facebook Live and the livestream.
[inaudible]
Uh oh. Oh, is that okay? Okay. Right when I said no technical difficulties. But they're monitoring the chat. And so as we move through the presentations, if you have questions, you can put those in the chat, and we're going to have some time at the end for question and answer. We have several folks here to help share information, and I will introduce them as each one comes forward. But let me take a moment and open us with a word of prayer. Gracious and loving God, we thank you for the way that you have guided us and walked with us in this year so far. A year that started off in this very place with a talent show and laughter and fun and singing. And quickly, by the month of March, we found ourselves in a pandemic and unable to worship and gather together in person. As we've navigated these past weeks and months, I thank you for the faith and flexibility of this congregation, for the creativity of our lay leaders and our staff, to find new ways for us to connect and grow in our faith and serve our community. Be with us now as we share some of those stories, as we celebrate your presence among us, and as we look ahead to the future you have for us. We pray all of this in Christ's name. Amen. Okay, first up, I'm going to invite Davis Turner to come forward. He is the Chair of the Ministry Table this year, and he has some updates for us about our finances.
Good afternoon. As Carol said, my name is Davis Turner, and I am honored to have served as the Chair of the Ministry Table this year. And I want to express my appreciation to the Chairs of all the committees who serve on the Ministry Table, along with the Ministers and staff of the Church, as well as everyone who serves on a committee of the Church. You all have done an outstanding job of continuing the ministries of the Church during these unusual times. My role today is to update you on Church finances. First, however, I want to thank a few people that have helped keep the Church on firm financial footing. Matt Harden chairs the Finance Committee, and I would like to thank him for his leadership, and all the members of the Finance Committee for their service. Sandy Durbin is the Church's Financial Officer, and West End is blessed to have someone of her capabilities in this role, especially this year. Sandy was pivotal in helping the Church secure a PPP loan, and then in securing the loan's forgiveness. And finally, Candy Good, the Director of the Preschool, has done an outstanding job in applying for and receiving grants for the preschool. Most importantly, I would like to thank all of you for your continued generosity to the Church. We recognize that we are living through a very tough time financially for many of our members, but we are very thankful for the generosity of those in position to continue to give to finance the ministries of the Church. Also, one of the surprises this year has been the generosity of our visitors. We have been blessed both by your presence in our midst and by your generosity. Turning now to the numbers. Through the end of October, our pledged giving totaled $1.3 million, lagging the budget by just $33,000. Our non-pledged giving, however, has exceeded our budget by $71,000. Our other revenue, which encompasses revenues such as building use fees, has been down, as one would expect. However, as of the end of October, our total revenues lagged the 2020 budget by just $4,474. Total year-to-date expenses are under budget by $200,000. Therefore, the year-to-date deficit is currently $150,000. Now, we expect to have a deficit, be in a deficit position at this time of the year, since so much of our Church revenue comes in during the last month or two of the year. However, this deficit is over $200,000 less than we had budgeted, so we are in a very good financial position at the end of October. Now, you may wonder, where do these funds go? Well, there are various ways to break this down, but this pie chart shows where the money was allocated in the 2020 budget by functional area. So 24% goes to worship, 17% goes to music, 16% goes to spiritual formation, 12% goes to outreach and advocacy, another 12% goes to children's ministry, 10% goes to congregational care, and 9% goes to our youth ministry. Now Sandy Durbin, our Church Financial Officer and our Finance Committee, had been working hard on our budget for next year. Given these uncertain times, we are being very conservative in our revenue budgeting. Historically, the revenue budget anticipates an increase in giving from year to year. Our 2021 budget projects flat giving, and then removes most of the facility-related rentals. Our most notable reduction in facility-related rentals from 2020 to 2021 was parking lot revenue, which did not materialize, and that was budgeted at $30,000 in 2020. So this conservative revenue budgeting, combined with a slight increase in budgeted expenses, results in a small budgeted deficit for 2021 of $52,000. We have enough surplus from previous years to fund this small deficit. This budget will be up for approval at the December meeting of the Ministry Table, so is not yet final. We also are in the midst of our Faithful Giving Campaign. Last Sunday was Turn In Sunday. If you have turned in your 2021 estimates, I thank you. If you have not, this chart of our 2020 estimates of giving may be of interest to you. In 2020, we had 357 estimates of giving, and the average estimate was a little over $5,000. Of the 357 estimates received in 2020, 57 estimates were less than $1,000, 75 estimates were between $1,000 and $2,000, 99 estimates were between $2,000 and $5,000, 70 estimates were between $5,000 and $10,000, and 54 estimates exceeded $10,000. Wherever your estimate falls on this chart, we thank you for your generosity. We will continue to receive estimates this month and the next, and even into the New Year. But our count as of Friday is that we have received 182 estimates of giving totaling $1,012,078. This number of estimates and the amount of estimates are on par with where we have been at this time in past years. For all of 2020, we received 357 estimates of giving totaling approximately $1.8 million, so we are about 175 estimates short of last year's total estimates, which represents approximately $800,000. If you have not yet had the opportunity to turn in your estimate of giving, I would encourage you to do so as soon as possible, so that the Church can plan accordingly. You can do so by mailing in the cards you should have received, or by going to the Church website and entering your estimate under the Give tab you will find there. Thank you, and now I'll turn it back over to Carol.
Thank you, Davis. And this is an opportunity to thank you, Davis, for your incredible, steady, wise leadership of the Ministry Table this year. As part of his role as the Chair of Ministry Table, Davis also attends the Finance Meetings, Staff Parish Meetings, Trustees Meetings. So he's had a lot of meetings this year, and every meeting he attends, he brings deep faith and a great love for this Church and for God and our community. And we are just incredibly blessed to have your leadership this year. So if you see Davis or want to write him a note or send him an email, he deserves lots of thanks from all of us. Next up, we want to take a few moments to celebrate some of the ways that God has been moving in and through West End this year. And we're going to start off with a little slideshow that show us some images of what we've been up to for the past few months. Okay, I hope you enjoyed that. We're going to be sending a link out to this Town Hall Meeting recording if you want to go back and watch that again and lift your spirits at another time. I hope you'll do that. I want to talk a little bit now about attendance during this time of pandemic and some of the numbers we've seen online in worship and in spiritual formation opportunities. We've had lots of people asking, you know, how many folks are tuning in for worship on Sundays? And these numbers are very unscientific. We just get raw numbers each week and just sort of have basic averages. So this is a real generalized average. But you might be interested to know that on the livestream each week, we're averaging about 450. In both livestream and Facebook, we've seen a little bit of a slump in the past month or so, past couple of months, which may be due to screen fatigue, or lots of reasons, but we want to be mindful of that. We did have, on the livestream, we had over 1,000 unique views at Easter. A unique view means that one person counts for each view. So if one person watches three or four times, it still just counts as one unique view, if that makes sense. So we had over 1,000 unique views on livestream and 1,300-plus on Facebook for Easter, which was exciting. Some of you may have seen the clip of the Hallelujah Chorus that our choir sang on Easter Sunday. I think that got shared a lot on Facebook. For some reason, we had 1,100 people on August 30th on livestream, and Aaron preached that Sunday. So it was a great sermon. I don't know, but we just had, the numbers were just like, woo, on August 30th, which is kind of exciting. We have had about 230 or so actually registering their attendance online every Sunday, which is a pretty good number of people who take the time to register and let us know that they're worshiping with us. Through that, we've connected with people who are worshiping with us from all across the country, who have never set foot in the sanctuary at West End but have been worshiping with us and are part of our family. And then, as we started in-person worship in September, we have hit an average of about 35 people coming in person on Sundays. Of course, as the numbers go up drastically in Nashville right now, we're going to be stepping back and evaluating all of that and looking at what's the wise thing to do. So please be on the lookout for information about that in the days ahead. But so far, we're averaging about 35 or 40 people. And a big thanks to all those who have been volunteers and who have helped us to make that happen. Jim Raver, Melanie Paulson, especially on the staff, have put in a lot of extra time, and we are grateful for that. I'm going to do the next slide here. To highlight some of the spiritual formation opportunities that we've had since January, before the pandemic hit, we were excited to host an Enneagram Workshop with Suzanne Stabile, which was attended by over 450 people, most of them from outside of the Church and even outside of this area. So it was a great success, and we were happy to do that, and we learned a lot. Also, before the pandemic, we had some short-term studies about the Enneagram. We had a group that looked at Christian mysticism, but that was a class that got interrupted by the pandemic. So once things began to shut down, we started moving things online and have had some wonderful creativity and innovation about that. I meant to mention from the previous slide, Brandon Baxter and Katie Minnis have worked hard to put together an online interview series, which has gotten a lot of traffic on Facebook and has been very well received. And you can go back and watch any of those on our Facebook page at the Church. We had about 135 people, at our maximum, who participated in the online Sunday School class for adults with Dr. Jimmy Byrd. His topic on the religion and the Civil War was really engaging and a great experience for all of us who participated. Over the course of the pandemic, we've had several short-term book studies, including Jan Morrison is going to come up in just a minute and talk about some work that has grown out of a group book study. It was already planned at the beginning of the year that a group would study together Ibram Kendi's book, How to Be an Anti-Racist. And at the death of George Floyd, right at the time that this book was, this book group was starting, we had over 40 people at one time who were participating in that. And there's some ministry that's grown out of that that Jan's going to talk about in just a minute. We've had over 74 people participate in one form or another of an online spiritual formation class. Our Sunday School classes, most of them have continued to meet over Zoom. Some of them are able to have friends from the class who've moved to other places across the country but can now join back into Sunday School, and are seeing actually bigger numbers than they did before the pandemic. Let's see, what else to highlight? The Covenant Discipleship groups are continuing to meet. And finally, our Teze Worship Service tried moving into a livestream format, and their participation has grown quite a bit through that venue. And so though the pandemic has been a challenge, and it's not the same as being together, we have found new ways of connecting with one another, and most especially people that wouldn't normally be able to meet in person for one reason or another. We've really had a great time experiencing connection with each other through Zoom. So next up, Jan Morrison is here to share with us a little bit of the work that has come out of that initial study of How to Be an Anti-Racist. So I'm going to hand it over to Jan and put my mask back on.
Thank you, Carol. So I'm going to talk about the Anti-Racism Task Force. And as Carol was saying, it began out of a book study of How to Be an Anti-Racist by Ibram X. Kendi. And we are part of the Tennessee Conference Anti-Racism Task Force, and we're trying to live out our bedrock belief that God loves everyone unconditionally. We officially started meeting over Zoom on May 28th as part of our book study, and we've met monthly ever since. Our next meeting is Thursday, November 19th. We worked with Neely Hicks at Glencliff United Methodist to create, sign, and send a petition to Governor Lee on August 17th over the controversial State Bill 8005, which charges protesters with felonies and takes their voting rights away. The bill was largely aimed at Black protesters at the Legislative Plaza. As a group, as we've said, we've read How to Be an Anti-Racist. We're currently reading Be the Bridge by Latasha Morrison. Also pastors Emily, Maggie, Brandon, and Katie have led or are leading book studies, one about raising white kids, I'm Still Here, and This Spirit Walk. We held a prayer and protest vigil in front of the Church on June 21st. A subgroup has been created to specifically look at the history of the United Methodist Church and West End United Methodist and our role in racism. Stacy and I met with leaders at the American Baptist College and other Nashville leaders regarding racism on August 27th. Emily Towns preached at West End on September 20th. We are currently reaching out to organizations in Nashville to create and expand our relationships, and this includes Bethlehem Center, Gideon's Army, the Equity Alliance, the NAACP, and NOAA. We will have a pulpit swap with Gordon United Methodist and Dr. Paula Smith on November 22nd, and Pastor Carol will preach at Gordon UMC on December 13th. These are just the first steps in a long journey, and we are moving forward in faith that this is where God is leading us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan, for your leadership in this effort. I would add to that a couple of things. The Ministry Table passed, crafted and passed a statement of our commitment to anti-racism, which you can find on our website, with very specific commitments that we are making and actions that we want to take together. And one of those involves our staff and our training in anti-racism and implicit bias. And as a staff, we just completed some work this past week with an inventory on intercultural development and are continuing to have conversation about our own implicit biases and how that affects how we work, how we hire, and what our hopes are to do better in the future and to create a better future. So I will also, I feel like there was something else, but it left my mind. So now I'm going to turn us to our current state of our denomination and the work of our discernment team and our wedding policy. And to introduce that, I'm going to ask Chase to start a video that has been prepared by two members of our discernment team.
Good afternoon. I'm Trey Harrell, and Carol has asked Marty Gentry and me to give you all a report on the progress we have made as a discernment team these past 19 months. Marty will tell you what we've been doing and what we have discerned our congregation should do going forward. My role is to explain why we have a discernment team in the first place. Probably the best place to begin the story is in 1972 at the General Conference of the relatively young United Methodist Church. It was at that General Conference that our denomination added the statement that homosexuality is incompatible with Christian teaching to the Book of Discipline, which is the document that serves as the United Methodist Church's Constitution or bylaws. Every four years, delegates and leaders of our denomination from all over the world come together to do the business of the Church and discern the direction of our ministry together. It's not an exaggeration to say that our denomination has wrestled with that anti-LGBTQ statement at every General Conference since 1972. Some General Conferences have actually strengthened it by subsequently clarifying that LGBTQ people cannot be ordained, or by ruling that clergy can't marry same-gender couples, and that weddings of same-gender couples can't occur on Church property. Occasionally, the Church has passed some sort of statement reminding its members that every person is beloved regardless of our differences, including our sexual orientations. But the reality is that the language against homosexuality remains in our Book of Discipline even today, and even though LGBTQ members of our congregation can serve on committees, sing in the choir, lead prayer, receive communion, and be baptized, they cannot marry here, they cannot have one of their pastors perform their wedding ceremony, and they cannot serve as ordained It's these prescriptions against the LGBTQ members of our congregation and how they affect every single one of us that our discernment team has been wrestling with for nearly two years now. We had hoped there would be a resolution coming from the denomination during the special call General Conference in 2019, but the comprehensive reforms, which even the Council of Bishops had supported, failed to pass. Negotiations resumed in late 2019, and another deal was brokered that promised reforms at General Conference 2020. That meeting had to be canceled, of course, because of the pandemic and has been rescheduled for September 2021, but there are beginning to be doubts about how that meeting will be held, and cracks are beginning to form in the agreements that were made to help move our denomination forward. And so, when one of our LGBTQ friends in this church falls in love and makes the decision to marry, we attend their wedding someplace else, in a park, in a backyard, in some other church, with the ceremony performed by someone we probably don't know, and our pastor relegated to some participatory role, reading the Scripture or saying a few words in support. In those moments, we are complicit in the lie that our LGBTQ friends are full members of this congregation. And so, where does all of that leave us, the members of West End United Methodist Church at this time? Marty will share that with you now. I do want to introduce our entire discernment team. I do want to introduce our entire discernment team. It's been Marty Gentry, Carol Kevin Dillon, Sue Smith, Fern Ritchie, Jeff Howerton, Kirby Davis, Haley Hindren, and myself. And our facilitator has been the wonderful Judy Skeen. It has truly been a privilege to be a part of this group. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. As Trey has says, my name is Marty Gentry, and I am one of nine people working on the discernment team here at West End. Our job, while not simple, is concise: to pray, to listen to the congregation, and to seek the wisdom of the Holy Spirit in respect to West End's inclusion of LGBTQ-plus persons. The congregation at West End has long held the conviction that God loves everyone unconditionally. We strive to live out that conviction in many ways as we work among the poor, the sick, the lonely, the excluded, and the vulnerable. As part of our mission for many years, we have followed God's call actively and intentionally to proclaim God's love and affirmation of LGBTQ-plus persons. As West End gained clarity around the mission, the denomination continued to be in conflict over policies of marriage and ordination for LGBTQ-plus persons and continued to uphold policies of exclusion. This led the discernment team to consider the questions: Who is West End called to be in this moment? How does West End continue to live into our mission under these newly restrictive policies? And depending on the decisions made at the next General Conference, which was supposed to be May of 2020, what will our congregation do? Through prayer, listening, sharing, and discernment, the team put forth a statement that was approved by the Ministry Table and shared as a litany and worship during the month of January 2020. In this litany, we affirmed our commitment to work for the full inclusion of all people in every aspect of church life, including weddings and ordination. The team recognizes that not all members of West End support the celebration of same-sex marriage or the ordination of LGBTQ-plus persons. The congregation holds a diversity of opinions and experiences, and we strive for all voices to be heard and honored. However, as the team listened and prayed, we felt that the general consistence and movement of the congregation was for the full inclusion of our LGBTQ-plus members. After the initial crisis of the pandemic hit, the discernment team met for prayer and conversation. It was time to look again at where we are as a congregation and who we are called to be in this season of waiting. The covenant of Christian marriage was established by God, who created human beings to be in relationship with one another. Standing together before God, we embrace all who as disciples of Jesus Christ, are devoted to love of God and neighbor and wish to enter into holy matrimony. When same-sex couples at West End wished to enter the marriage covenant, our pastors face a conflict between their vows to minister to the entire congregation and to uphold the United Methodist Book of Discipline. They are required to deny the rights of marriage to some members of the Church based on their sexual orientation, an exclusion we as a congregation have found to be incompatible with our understanding of the Gospel. After much prayer and holy discussion, the discernment team brought to the Ministry Table this proposal: that we edit our wedding policy so that it is gender-neutral and opens the door for same-sex weddings, and that we issue a statement of support for our pastors should they choose to follow their consciences, and officiate a wedding of LGBTQ-plus church members here at West End. The proposal drafted by the discernment team was unanimously accepted by the Ministry Table. We do not take this statement lightly. We understand the precedent that it makes for our Church. We understand the powerful message that it sends to our community. We understand the commanding testimony it sends to the greater United Methodist Church. We recognize that some of West End's members might have some apprehension with our statement, and I hope to relieve some of that uneasiness. The leaders of West End have sought to completely be transparent during this process. We have been in conversation with Bishop McIlhley and Summa Intendant Alleridge while preparing our proposal, and will continue to include them throughout this process of solidifying our mission here at West End, one of which is to discover and use our Spirit-given strengths to work for God's justice, peace, and reconciliation. We believe this is the most responsible way forward. We want our clergy to know that they have our full support as they seek to stop the harm which continues to be inflicted on members of our own congregation. Thank you.
I want to take this opportunity to thank the members of our discernment team who were introduced to you once again in the course of the video. The conversations that we have had, the 18 months to two years of a journey that we've been on together, have been some of the holiest work that I have experienced, and I want to share with all of you what a spirit-filled, prayerful experience this has been. And also to thank the members of the Ministry Table. The discernment team brought this proposal to them in August, and that group prayed about it and had conversation about it and then took the time. It took two months to work it through and finally to take that final vote of consensus. And so, it's something that we celebrate together and give thanks to God for, for it truly feels that God is with us on this journey. We will have some time in just a few minutes for question and answer, but there's one more piece of ministry that I want to share with you, and this is about our opportunity to participate in Project Thrive. Hopefully, you've heard a lot about this already. Several months ago, we were invited by Belmont University and the Center for Healthy Churches to participate alongside 18 other churches of many denominations in the urban core of Nashville in this Lilly Grant called Project Thrive. And it began this summer where I was gathering with other pastors from these churches over Zoom once a week and having conversation and talking about how we were navigating the pandemic and things happening in our ministries. And now it has blossomed further into creating leadership teams within each congregation who are beginning the process of what we call appreciative inquiry, looking into our congregations and asking those questions of what is going well? What are the gifts that our congregation uniquely brings to this community? And we have put together a team of folks. This is your Project Thrive team for 2021, and I'll just read their names in case you can't see the slide very well. Carol Ballinger, Kendall Deitman, Brian Freeman, Emily Hollitt, Heath Jones, Brian Payne, Monty Wilson, and myself. And this fall, we are hosting conversations that we're calling Past Conversations, where we are inviting folks to join us and tell us their stories of how they came to West End, when did West End become the body of Christ for them, and what are those core qualities about West End that make us a church home for you? We've had two of those conversations so far, so now we know how to do it, and we're hoping to have larger groups and larger conversations over the next few weeks. So, I urge you to take advantage of the opportunity to participate in one of these conversations. They really have been beautiful and moving, and we will work through those through the fall. And then in January, February, next slide, we will be moving into conversations around our present moment. Who are we now, and what are the opportunities that are right in front of us in this present moment? And then later in the spring, we'll move into conversations about the future and where God is calling us to move. This grant spans across five years. We have a congregational coach. I have a personal coach who's working with me, and over the next five years, we'll be seeing more clearly, we hope, what God is calling us to do and to be, and hopefully some new plans for ministry will grow out of this. So, I wanted to make sure you were aware of what Project Thrive was and that you'll be on the lookout for opportunities to be supportive and to help us in these conversations that are coming up. That brings our presentations to a close, so now we want to give a few minutes for question and answer. On hand in the room, we have Davis Turner, of course, and Jan Morrison, who you've already heard from. Trey Harrell is also here on behalf of the discernment team, and then a couple of others of us from the staff are here. So, if you want to put your questions into the chat on the livestream, Brandon and Sarah will be monitoring that and will, and I'll repeat the questions so that everybody will know what's been asked.
We had a question about, there was a chart earlier that showed a pie chart of the different areas of ministry that were paid for. There was a question as to what was included in worship.
Okay. I'll let Davis answer that question.
So, the question is, I assume worship in the budget is for staff? Is that all that falls in that piece of the pie chart? This actually was developed by Brent Clark, who's head of our Faithful Giving Campaign, working with Sandy Durbin, our Chief Financial, Church Financial Officer. It's just a different way to think of how our budget is allocated versus just looking at this much to, this much for salaries, this much for building maintenance. So, it tries to spread all of that. So, there's not just staff in worship, you know? There's also staff in the music, in office, youth ministries, and children's ministries. So, the staff's kind of spread out through those various areas, trying to allocate them. So, there is staff, obviously, in worship, you know? There's other costs of heating and cooling the building related to that, and so that's spread out among all these areas. So, it's just a trying to, different way to think of our budget versus just looking at salaries and looking at how much it costs to heat and cool the building. I didn't develop this, and so, you know, if there's specific questions, I can get Brent Clark and Sandy to answer those questions on how they developed this chart.
And then there's a sort of related question about salaries for choir section leaders and custodians, how they've been affected, also preschool budgets separate for times have been affected. Could somebody just speak a little bit to how salaries and everything else have been affected or not affected at this time?
So, salaries for choir section leaders and custodians, how they've been affected, and also the preschool budget separate from the Church. It's a ministry of the Church, and how's that been affected? So, we were able to get a PPP loan that you probably have read about. A lot of businesses and church, other churches and schools were able to get that, and because of that loan, we were able to keep everybody employed. Even though the preschool was shut down, preschool teachers were still getting paid. And now the preschool's back open, not at 100% capacity yet, but they're still getting paid. And my understanding is, and the custodians, you know, they've continued to work. Obviously, we need to keep the building extra clean now, and with the preschool back open, there is need for the custodians, so they've continued to work and be paid as well. And my understanding is the section leaders also have been paid as. Thank you.
I have a question about the wedding policy. When, how, and when will the new wedding policy be implemented?
Do you want to address that, Trey? The question is, how and when will the new wedding policy be implemented? Trey Harrell.
Hi, thank you. So, the policy's been approved by the Ministry Table, and so it is really in effect now. As I think anybody who's been involved with the wedding knows, it's a long process with working with the staff and pastors. And so, we will proceed as we would with any other wedding that has been done here at the Church. Probably part of that question is, at what point do things change as far as if it being a same-gender wedding? And that would be after the wedding occurs. If someone were to bring a complaint to the bishop, that's where the process would be different. I think that addresses sort of the question.
May I just say a quick word? I will say a quick word. This also represents a change. We have been doing non-member weddings as well at West End for several years, and we've seen some trends in that area in terms of the amount of staff time it takes for our wedding coordinators, and Nashville becoming a little bit more of a destination wedding location. And so, the policy change is also that weddings would be available to members of the Church and family. And of course, any one of us pastors can make an exception to that, but we are moving away from non-member weddings to only member weddings. We do have some non-member weddings on the calendar for 2021 that will, of course, honor and grandfather in, but moving beyond 2021 will be just church members. So. No more questions? Okay, we'll give folks just another minute to ask questions as we begin to wrap up. In closing, we wanted to let you know that the Chair of Ministry Table for 2021 will be Ashley Howerton, and she could not be here this afternoon, but she will be leading that group, which is our governing body of the Church. We have a whole slate of new leaders who have been contacted by our Leadership Committee, have said yes to serving next year, a really wonderful group of folks, and I ask that you would be in prayer for those who are coming into leadership in '21, and also praying a prayer of thanks for all those who have served in 2020. This has been the most challenging year of ministry I've ever had, and I think it's been the most challenging year for many of us just in getting through our daily work. So, thank you, as always, for your patience, for all of your support, for your faith, and for your trust that God is with us, we are not alone, and that we are living into our call to be the Church. As we look ahead to what's next, again, I'll just repeat to be sure and be paying attention to any decisions we might make about in-person worship and in-person gatherings. We are planning for our candle lighting service to be a virtual service, and we hope that you'll come on the first Sunday of Advent to get your Advent wreath-making kit in the parking lot and join us in lighting a candle and singing in the parking lot outdoors in preparation for that service. We're making plans for Christmas Eve where we will record a Christmas Eve service that you can use for your worship purposes at any time on Christmas Eve. We have talked about offering in-person options, but we're going to have to evaluate that, I think, given the rising numbers in Nashville. And then we'll continue our hope and prayers for a vaccine early in the year so that maybe by Easter, we can all be back in the sanctuary again, singing, "Christ, our Lord, is risen today." Thank you so much for your attention today. God bless you, and I look forward to seeing you again soon.